This conference will now be recorded.
Yeah, good.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vayner City Council. It is Thursday, April 14th, 2022. It is 6:01 PM. Roll call.
Jason Daley.
Here.
Randy Hall.
Here.
Dan MacIntosh.
Here.
Matt Lovelady.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
We're all in attendance. Excellent. Mr. Parsons, would you be honored for the playground?
My congratulations to the Black United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report. The Warden Park Playground, as most people have probably seen, is well underway. The equipment install is nearly complete. Uh, we expect that to finish up on Wednesday, this fall next week, um, with the rest of the drain rock and the bark chips following, uh, the next week. We should have a great looking setup here very shortly. Uh, the way we start our schedule, plan it update. Uh, the finishing work on the, um, lab building and the corny building are the, the, the painting right now, so just finishing up. And, uh, I did hear this week though that there's some specialized computer controls, um, that are backordered, like everything else. Something like the vector related, um, it's gonna take a little extra time. So there, they think it might take an extra, um, couple of months before startup can happen down there. So maybe by August, but that's not set in stone yet. So, but, um, shouldn't be a problem. A reminder that Parks Board and planning committees will have a meeting next week, Wednesday and Thursday. That's for reports.
I had a question about the cat vouchers.
Cat vouchers.
I have some information for you. The cats, meow, is who we used to have a voucher program with. So I contacted them to see what we'd do this time. And actually, they don't transport them up to Kent anymore. They actually have a clinic now in Jales.
Okay.
And so, um, we can have people go there, but right now they're not doing females, but they are doing male cats. It'll cost us forty dollars. It'll be more than that. So you guys as a council can decide, do you want to reimburse part of that to people or do you want?
I think we in the past, didn't we in the past, um, re- redeemed them like fifteen dollars or something like that?
I thought it was like ten, but yeah.
Oh, it's fifteen.
Yeah.
I think we put two hundred dollars in a, in account or something like that for that purpose or?
Yeah, we used to have a line item for it.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't this year, so, um, so you can have to decide how you want to.
But we could pull it from like special events or something or make that online if we want to.
Yeah, we have to. I'm not sure. We did.
It was at least a thousand.
Yeah.
So I think the other thing we need to hear.
I think it's a good incentive because I do, you know, anything to help people feel it's reachable to get their, to get that done because of our cat problem that we have around here.
During the COVID, they've been dropping cats everywhere.
Oh, yeah.
I got stuff in my cell.
Our area right by where we are got slammed with cats.
Is that something that we need to make a motion on or, yeah, we make a motion on it because it's not on the agenda?
Well, I mean, if it's something, um, if like you can do is, um, yeah, we can add it to the city business for next week. Um, if you guys want to maybe specify an amount and then we can have it as a, as an adjustment on the next week.
And maybe look into what we usually did, like if it's two hundred or whatever and decide how much to make. Okay. The number of cats that would be served or whatever.
Then y'all can know where it's coming from in the budget as well. You have to create a new offer, move it from one part of the budget to a hundred.
And I did mention that they're not doing females, but we only have one vet right now.
Right.
But if they did, the cost from females is a hundred and ten.
Ooh. I wonder they were killing female cats.
Oh, yeah. Babies.
Okay. Any other council reports?
Should be cat vouchers.
Can, can we discuss or can we add, um, garbage onto the, uh, agenda since there are no real discussions on it?
Yeah, yeah, we should talk. If, yeah, to agenda approval, we can add. Were there any other council reports? Okay, move on to the agenda approval. So like, first, have an addition.
Um, I will approve, make a motion to approve the agenda. Um, adding the discussion of trash services.
I'll second that.
We have a motion, Mr. Parsons, to approve the agenda with the addition of trash service discussion. Uh, we have a second, Ms. Lovelady for that motion. Any other discussion? Okay, none of those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for council meeting on March 24th, 2022, and the council special meeting on, uh, March 1st, 2022.
The motion by Mr. Parsons to approve both of the council meeting minutes. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Lovelady. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Doctor approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the vouchers for the first of April, 2022, for the total of three hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy-four dollars and twenty-three cents.
With a motion by Mr. Daley to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paul. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports to this council here, so.
Good evening. Uh, for the month of March, the law enforcement totals, there were a total of three hundred and thirty-three citizen contacts, uh, four calls when a deputy was dedicated to the city of Vader, uh, twenty-one traffic stops resulting in two infractions, and there were no arrests at any point, no physical arrest.
How many calls were there when they were in law enforcement?
Okay, the off-call shifts, there were none.
So the total of thirteen calls over last month.
Thirteen called, oh, and that doesn't count any numbers that we pull for traffic infractions. That's somebody.
Somebody called.
Yeah, somebody actually called.
Didn't arrest anybody?
No custody arrests.
We need to, we need to make a list for you.
Are you volunteering?
Questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, move on to the business item number one, council to consider.
Pretty quiet.
Fine Polo Construction change order request, jail foundation, ramp, stairs. Um, you have a note in there, uh, with the, with the change order. There's no change in cost. Um, so originally when they drew up the plans, there was going to be some stairs and a ramp. But because the engineering dry and the, the engineer's request, uh, we did not put the, the steps on, we just kept a larger ramp. So basically, it's just approving the design change and the change in the contract.
Kind of a liability issue.
Yeah, it's already, it's already built, so.
Awesome.
Yeah.
And you're putting the, uh, ham rams on too?
Yeah, that's in the works. The city's gonna take care of it, so.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the construction change order request for Fine Polo Construction.
A motion by Parsons to approve the change order request. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Lovely. Further discussion? Are there none of those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item number two, council to consider Clark and Sons progress bill two for twenty thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars and five cents. This would be the second part of the playground project for the parking lot only. Um, this amount is minus the retainage. Since the parking lot was paved, we have noticed that there is standing water out there, um, at the joint between the new pavement and the old pavement. Quite, it's quite deep and very long. So, um, they do intend to come out and fix it. But, um, that's, we will keep the retainage back until they finally do fix it.
Are they gonna charge us for it?
Nope.
So is this what we're keeping back or are we keeping a portion of this back?
We're keeping five percent of the total of that sign.
The retainage is eleven, right here.
Eleven hundred.
Do we need to say anything about this? Or it just says to consider it. Oh.
You guys then.
Oh, okay.
Say, yes, we'd like to pay the bill.
I, I think we, I think we, we should.
We kind of gotta pay the bill.
Pay the bill.
How much is it?
If they're gonna come back and be.
I don't know how much it's gonna cost to fix it, but we're not gonna pay for it.
It was like a slip.
Well, we're only holding an eleven oh four nut instead of.
That's all we can do with the contract.
Oh.
But we use, we still have a contract. They still need to honor it. And part of that contract in the scope of work was to make sure that the water does run either to one of the drainage sources and not pool.
You, you see no problem in your question.
They, they've already responded. They've already been in contact with their paving crew. They subcontracted it out. Um, so they've been responsive.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the, and the progress bill number two for twenty thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and five cents to Clark and Sons Escavating.
We have a motion by Mr. Daley to approve Clark and Sons progress bill number two. Do we have a second?
Seconded that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Further discussion? Are there none of those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three, council to consider resolution zero three dash twenty twenty-two, small works roster. Um, the city does have an annual membership to the MRSC Small Works Roster. Uh, needs to be renewed every year and it's that time of the year. So it's kind of just a normal, normal thing that we do every year. Um, for those of you that don't know, the Small Works Roster is a list of, um, approved contractors, um, that sign up through MRSC to be eligible for government work such as Clark and Sons. It's already down Clark and Sons. Um, Fine Polo Construction is also on there. So the city goes to do the Small Works Roster to find eligible contractors. And there's a small fee every year that we pay.
It's like being in Sam's room.
Pretty much.
It's like a clearinghouse. So when we look for contractors, they've already checked to see if they have their own nihilism done, if they are training. We don't have to do that work.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution zero three twenty twenty-two, Small Works Roster.
We have a motion by Ms. Lovely to approve resolution zero three dash twenty twenty-two for the Small Works Roster. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Daley. Discussion? Are there none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And number four, city business council would consider resolution zero four dash twenty twenty-two for the surplus inventory. This is a long time coming. Uh, so the city maintains an inventory of all of its assets, everything from laptops to tractors to desks.
Chairs.
Everything. It's got a, it's got a little number on it, U.S. and Cal. It's a, it's an asset. Anyway, um, so every year we make an, we go to the inventory and decide things that we don't need anymore, old computers and things like that. So you see a very long list in here of different things around the city that, that, that we own, that, um, we deemed are no longer important and we would like council to consider this surplus so that we can get rid of it.
Could we sell it? Could, could, you fund the cat thing? There, you know, there's specific ways you can, uh, do it really good. What do you think? You know, like have a, a, a hot sale in front of the city hall?
We're a city surplus sale or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, once, once it's seen a surplus, then, then we can figure out the best way to get rid of it.
Do we get first dibs on stuff on the list?
That was my point.
Jason wants something.
Absolutely not.
It's like night vision, yeah.
Funds, Jason.
That whole modem that we're here?
Oh, wait, hold on now.
One of the night vision. Mm-hmm.
Radar.
Some of the police equipment we can actually send to the, um, the auction with Lewis County, um, auction because the police departments can use it. Or we can actually offer it to other police departments that.
As matsuit. For the parachute, by the way.
Breathalyzers.
Police footballs.
Can I?
Has matsuit.
Buy something off of that one?
I wouldn't recommend it.
No, we can't. Everyone else can. We can.
You said no doesn't have a value. Hey, now I'm buying.
No, we can't do that. But we can't want the breathalyzer and radar.
That make, we'd like to have a radar gun, yeah.
I call the. Wait the cones.
A radar and pass the restaurant, pass the house.
So, I mean, we can do that anyway.
Yeah, I don't see any problem with this.
Get rid of that?
I'll make a motion that we.
Parachute.
I'm at.
We could put that in museums, didn't we?
Parachute?
Yeah, why not?
No, parachute with straps for kids to play with.
Okay, that's.
We don't have to get rid of it. We get them, but.
We have police bikes.
Ever seen when the bomb is open?
No.
Oh, is that what they do? Mambus police bikes.
The brand new.
How many police officers did we have?
We only had one that rode the bike.
We only had one of them. But we had four bikes. She's from everywhere.
So that's something that we want to auction off or something like that. Keep that with, cover your cat.
Yeah, what if we auctioned that off May Day?
Police too. That's always fun.
Good idea.
Okay.
Open ocula.
I'll, I'll make a motion that we, um, consider that we surplus the inventory, resolution zero four twenty twenty-two.
I know.
We have a motion by Mr. Daley to approve resolution zero four dash twenty twenty-two for surplus inventory with second, Ms. MacIntosh. Further discussion? For the, for the wish list?
Yeah, so how do we?
They have any.
Is it auctioned off? Is that?
No, it's, now we.
Can we discuss at the next meeting what to do with all of it?
Well, what I was gonna say is that in the past, I remember that they did have kind of a garage, so it was being expensive on garage. Or maybe, but people had to do auctions, they had to sign, kind of like a style of auction. And then at whatever point then they announce, you know, you fill in the items and that's how you do it.
I like that idea.
You're not like favorites or anything like that.
Yeah, and that way someone could go like behind Mike or I and be like an extra fifty bucks. We could bid on.
I think we should do that again at May Days. I'm sure Anita would like something else going on at May Days.
Would you like a few manpower?
Yeah, it's just the manpower. I know that there's.
Yeah.
I was gonna suggest the same thing, you know, that, that.
Maybe the Boy Scouts, maybe the Boy Scouts could do it.
Extremely busy right now with park and all this other stuff.
Yeah.
So we could use ones.
Aren't you an MC in May Day already? Don't you always MC it?
Well, Mike is already on the list for the K-1.
Yeah.
What?
You MC it every year.
Do it once.
I'm not on the list for anything. Okay. I'm not on the list for anything.
I've taken myself off a lot of lists.
Me too.
Well, we have some motions on the table here, um, as far as hosting it for a May Day scale. That's gonna be discussed. Volunteers after the meetings.
We have one more meeting before May Day.
So we can talk about, so you're just gonna do it then?
You wanna, you wanna volunteer by voting? Not where they.
Anita can never say no. She can stop me that early.
Oh, she might tell you that.
You're not.
No.
Any other discussion on the surplus inventory at this time? All those in favor to approve resolution zero four dash twenty twenty-two for the surplus, surplus inventory, say aye.
Aye.
For the discussion? Any opposed? Motion carries.
I think we did that.
Item number five, trash service.
Yep, first. So, um, contract is coming up. Um, and I don't know. I'm, I don't know if Jeff is wanting to or not wanting to. That, um, but if we were able to take the trash service over as the city, I think that would be an amazing thing because we already have the billing in place and it's already an ordinance or a law that they have to have trash service. Um, and so I think that if we were to run it, they can bring, it'd be good.
I like the idea of adding it like with your sewer. It'd be sewer garbage and that way our billing would be more streamlined.
Would you offer bigger cans? Because your cans right now suck.
Well.
It's gonna all be later dates though.
It, it would all be, well, the contract is up this year and I don't know if. I have an idea, but I don't, I haven't talked to him and I don't want to say anything publicly. But if we were to, um, work something out, the cans would probably not get bigger right away because if we could get.
We only have one truck.
His truck was, it doesn't have an automatic loader and we don't want anybody lifting, what?
Oh.
Thousand pounds.
Yeah, we don't want.
Yeah.
Big garbage cans for somebody to throw in the back. But the other side of it, um, I know that some people have said LeMay. And to me, LeMay is a huge company and I've tried dealing with them before and I'm just a number. There's no no personal anything there. And I think that that's one of the things that I really enjoy about this town is I got a thing uh, in the mail the other day that said Mike Parsons Vader. That was all that was on it. And Angel at the post office, it was in my box. And that's just cool to me. I really enjoy that part of it. And the garbage again, man comes by and I'm able to have a conversation with them and.
Well, I think it's a great idea. I think, I think it'd pay for itself.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and it'd be just another revenue stream for, for the city. Give somebody else a job, maybe give people a job.
I would only want to do it if it's actually gonna like be profitable and like balance out, right?
Yeah.
LeMay is gonna not cost us as much money or let's say the garbage service is gonna cost us this much money this year and we're not gonna make it back and it's gonna put us in debt.
Well, when you, when you talk about LeMay, I think that people are going to have sticker shock when, if they were to come over.
I haven't seen LeMay's car system as well.
So. Yes.
We've had LeMay for the last eleven years and they've always been very good to us. Um, they actually, when we first moved in, walked up to our driveway and said, hey, you know, here's some garbage cans and, you know, here's the service here. So they were very nice. It cost about, we have recycling too.
Yeah.
And it cost about sixty dollars for two months.
See, that's not bad. And that's bigger than.
Jeff, Jeff right now at twenty-eight.
The cans are.
Thirty-one.
So coming from. Coming from the bigger city, if it's not gonna be like profitable for us and save us money doing it ourselves, I'm on team LeMay because I like bigger cans. I like recycling. I like all that. Well, I'm on team LeMay. Well, but you know what I mean? Like I like the idea of my big rolling can and the personalized aspects, yeah, you are gonna miss that. But are you gonna get that nice recycling, that automated, I can pay my bill really easy? And those are the sort of things that I, just for certain.
Can you pay your bill easy for sure?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying. If we get it like through us, but.
Yeah.
That's what we're lacking right now is the, the reliability and ease. So we can.
You're talking about a lot, a lot of costs getting involved in this.
I think there's costs, but I think, I mean, it's a business and so it should bring in a revenue.
Trucks are expensive, uh, liability. You know, you have to have more than one truck for backup. That's part of the problem with the current guy. He has a flatbed for backup.
I also wonder.
Yeah.
So when the guy gets hurt, things don't get done and delayed. Uh, is there a grant for this kind of stuff?
That's what I was just gonna say, we're gonna get a grant for.
I mean, it might be, I'm not saying no.
That might be something that's more.
I have no idea if there's.
I think we need to look in trains.
I know that I talked to, um, Lou's guys a little bit about this and they said that there's only, they're pretty sure that one of their only two cities in the state that have their own garbage service and it's Olympia and Spokane, just the two that they told me.
And they're huge.
Um, so that doesn't mean that we can't do it. Just, you want to understand that it would be unusual for us to do it, but hey, we're Vader.
I mean, I think that in the constructive meeting that we had this week, one of the things that we're talking about is there's a fine screen, uh, filter that's, that's my usual, that's set up to automatically dump into a dumpster. And so we are going to have to have a garbage service that can come with forks and lift that up and dump it. I don't know if this truck does that or not.
Don't you have a dumpster?
We have a dumpster and it.
And he does that with forks. So we, you know, that's the only thing they said that we need to be able to do that.
Well, this goes into that back thing and then that back thing like scoops it into the truck. I mean, I imagine that would work just the same. I don't know what kind of sludge that's gonna be generated from down there.
You were talking about it being a business and there being profit. If the city ran it, it would be a utility and it would not be for profit.
Oh, so it would be like sewage, so everything that we make off of it would have to go back into the garbage service.
Yeah, and which goes to the general side, only the taxes.
Which we give.
Yeah.
So best case, I mean, best case would be we'd be doing it for the residents, not for the city. Um, from the city's perspective, it's a headache for city hall. Now you've got a whole other utility to run. You've got potentially more employees and all the backups and.
Trust, like you need to have.
For the city's aspect, it's, it's a pain in the butt really. But for the residents, I mean, if you could, if you could do it in such a way and run it for less money, you could save the money, then it should be worth, worth the time that way.
And if you go. So the city can't make money to go back into the city?
Not a utility.
It's like though, like our sewer, all the revenue that comes in with those sewer accounts stays in the sewer fund. And so we only collect enough that we need to pay for the operations and maintenance and, um, put some money away for a rainy day for the sewer fund. It's a self-contained entity. It's a garbage through the same line.
For example, we are selling the historical books for the city at May Day, but the money that we receive from them, it usually doesn't go back.
Into general stuff so we can like use it for.
Profit.
Yay, government.
Yay, government.
So great idea of, we gotta see what's gonna work. Can we get grants for it? We can get grants for it. Might be something that makes it a lot easier access.
Can you get us more information, Mike, as far as like if we were gonna buy the truck or if it costs to buy the truck? Um, all those kind of things.
Well, if it's not a revenue maker, then.
True. Wait, that's not the right way to say it.
What's the point?
Well, I mean, the, the point would be that if we could do it as substantial, substantially less than what. Um, pretty waste recycling currently charges our customers or the residents, then it could be worthwhile.
One of the things that residents are screaming for that calls a lot is better customer service.
Yeah. Recycling is huge. Bigger cans and I always get the, why don't we have the nice cans we use? Because when you live in Longview or something, and I know we can't care so it's a long view without people, but you have these nice big rolling cans and they just have convenience. It's not dragging your can out to the street.
It costs me more money now. Cause I have to take what I can't put in that little can.
The dump. Yep.
So I'm paying more. So why can't I take that money and put it in the big company?
Put out another can.
Why don't you just put out another can for like a dollar fifty?
Put out another eighty, eighty can? It don't, no. Some, some people can't do that.
There's also other issues with the garbage van where he does charge certain people certain amounts and that is a whole different side topic. But I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
Cause we run through the same issues.
Yeah, some people can't afford to do that.
Well, it's cheaper than driving anywhere.
Yeah. Six months ago.
We certainly have lots of tools for.
And we can do some back of the nap calculations on what it would cost to. Run the waste, a waste department. We can have those for you.
And are they, I know that, I know that Jeff has issues with his billing. I know that. But. We also have a ton of people that. Just don't sign up for sewer or for garbage. Um, and they're supposed to. And so they always use different excuses, but now we have a house with a bunch of crap outside. So. Will we be able to with another company or is there a way that they enforce it or send us?
And the ordinance is ours.
I know that ordinance is ours, but we don't, there's no way for Diane to know if.
But they would have to send us a list, maybe of who's on.
Your list is written so that they will let us know everybody who's passed through. Um. That hasn't always been followed through with, but yes. Does big company should have a collection or you see?
Oh, yeah. A big company don't have a collection. They just be, you know, beyond you. It won't even be a thing. It, we'll honestly probably get more money or they'll probably get more money than Jeff would ever dream to see. They're gonna take you to collections, start making credit. It's gonna be a whole thing and you don't want your credit taken for thirty bucks in trash services. It sucks to go make business for certain aspects, but there's a lot of pros in La May.
Okay, where's the discussion?
Sorry, Mike. I feel like I just kicked it off.
I'm not interested in doing anything that's not going to bring in money. Very.
Yeah.
So if it's not gonna bring in money so that we can add to our general fund, unless, and I don't know if this is very.
Well, then don't say it.
What?
Well, then don't say it.
No.
Oh.
Cause government's all screwed up, so why not just throw it out there and see if this is why it's screwed up? So if we only keep the tax on it, right? So if we charge. Five dollars for garbage service and twenty-five dollars tax on that garbage service.
We can't do that.
There's a limit. There's an O W. You can only charge up to six percent.
Uh, well, that's dumb too.
See, that would bring.
Know yourself pro tax.
Right. He suddenly pro taxed twelve more.
Well, what is that? What is the windlock?
I mean, they do with gas, gas.
Windlock.
Toledo?
Go La May.
Toledo?
They do, they do South Military Road as well. So there are.
So La May tends basically everyone but Randy Wood and Vader. It's to the best of my knowledge, cause I know a couple of drivers. And like with La May, you can get that big dumpster, say you got a bunch of couches or something, they'll drop that off, you pay your fee.
It's a truck place. You have a bathroom for.
They got like point of access.
Right.
We don't have to push now headache.
Can I call on Kevin?
Insurance headache.
Can I respond to what I was questioning about money coming into the city? Basically it is taxes and also we lease a piece of property and we get money for that. Um, otherwise that's how it's set up and so we build our budget on those things. And so I would just remind you of the council the last, the last three years, you have raised real estate taxes. You can have that opportunity to do that and that would be a great order.
Any comments in the back there?
Um, Thomas, with La May, their county's reported and a lot of the programs that we do with the grants, we are really related to what kind of, um, like the shopping event. We have the ability to utilize certain aspects of this county, um. County special recycling events kind of thing. There's also a lot of. Places that we cannot utilize because we're not part of their, their, uh, Lewis County. We're not utilizing the same company that they are and so there's like huge containers for them to use. But, um. If we became part of that community service, that is per.
We could probably do like dust days and stuff like that, right?
That we actually be able to have, they would be more inclined from, what I understood from the LeMay case was that there's, they would be more inclined to be able to try and figure out how to set up a godlike recycling. Cardboard site, like what they have in Castle Rock for example. We might be able to do something temporary on a beach and here as well, if we were part of the made service, but because we're not, we can't utilize a lot of the resources.
One thing about those recycling places is that they don't do plastics anymore. They just do cardboard, paper.
Yeah, there's.
Tin.
Foam glass cans, cardboard, and then they have, they'll have some garbage, uh, garbage cans there as well. Like they don't.
They just have so much plastic and I've, I've looked at all those.
Time to have us not take the plastics, whatever.
What she has also told me is that it would be, to my knowledge, this would be, we have to have a permit.
They have enough over there, okay.
Then for that front or carry the time, they'd be able to trade it off that way. We think kind of like all the other.
Do we, do we know when the contract is up?
End of the year.
End of the year.
End of the year, September.
So, well, December thirty-first. So can we? I don't know if this, is it too soon to contact La May and get some prices?
No, I've already contacted them and I've not got.
All right, so along with.
I was gonna say I might have some numbers too.
So along with trash services, does a, does, uh, and I should have maybe added this, but does a. Code enforcement officer fall under that? It's cleaning up the trash, right? That we can talk about? Or do we need to talk about it next meeting?
I don't see that.
But it's not really related.
Can, um, okay, can we stop for next meeting for code enforcement officer? Hey, we're cleaning this town up.
Getting rid of cats, getting rid of junk cars.
Oh God, we can't get rid of cats. Don't say that.
We just get rid of cats.
Yeah, we just have to get them fixed and bring them right back to home.
All right, uh, seeing as the previous cost of the trash services discussion for the moment, uh, public comment.
I need to fill it out ahead of time. Thank you. Um, so first, uh, first thing list is with Lions, want to let everybody know that this Saturday at eleven o'clock, we're having an Easter egg hunt. Um, it's for ages, well toddlers up to twelve years and. I've been posting flyers and stuff everywhere. So, and I also heard that, uh, I believe today. Today or tomorrow, the hair salon is actually also hitting some Easter eggs for free children's haircuts. So. Something key and they're gonna be donating tour baskets as well.
For it in around town?
Yes, that's my understanding. I haven't had any other follow-up except from a couple of days ago, but. Um, just a heads up with Lions as well that Wednesday, May twenty-fifth, the circus is coming to town. It's gonna be on the, uh, grade school property and more information, we, I think Anita just got the flyers for all of that and more information and ticket sales and everything will be coming soon. It's best if you purchase the tickets directly from Alliance Club member because we actually, you can purchase them online, but they get more of a percentage of it versus if you order, get it from us directly. Then we get a higher cut of that fundraiser, so.
Can they be put down, can they be put down here at the? Um, city hall?
For tickets?
Or it has to be, I mean, can the city hall, that one?
If that's an option, then I can talk with Diane and or Anita or. Yeah, that'd be really cool. And if anyone actually.
Yeah.
It'd be easier on people too.
And if anyone wants to pre-purchase any of them as well, we can maybe do some kind of a raffle or a free handout at May Day with those as well. Because we all need one more thing to add onto one of those May Day tables. Um, we're also having a quilt raffle. There are two quilts. It's five dollars a ticket and the drawing will be June first. That's Lions. May Day, we have a yard sale happening April twenty-third and twenty, uh, twenty-second and twenty-third from nine to three or four o'clock, remember off the top of my head. Um, on Saturday, we will be selling Krispy Kreme donuts and we might be selling coffee beans as well. That's in the works. Um, for May Day itself, we are, we will have a cake walk and we need donations for any kind of cake, dessert, cookies, brownies, just a plate wrapped up. Um, and that can get dropped off the morning, starting the morning of May Day at nine AM. They can go throughout the day. And, uh, Kay will be out there accepting, accepting those donations. Vendors and prays, we need more vendors. So if anyone knows anyone. Uh, that, that is planning to be a vendor or, um, you think would be interested in being a vendor, then we need the. We're running out of spaces, but we still need, it was a really great meeting last night. We need members. The sooner the forums get in, the better is what it comes down to. Um, same thing with the parade forums. If anyone wants to be in the parade, we need those, those forums as well. I have the website or online on Facebook. It's, it's on our Vader, May Day page and, uh, all of the information, contact info is on the top of the forum. Since that's been a discussion. How do you get ahold of people? It's on the forum. Uh, silent auction, we're also looking for more silent auction items for on May Day. So if anyone has anything that they would like to contribute to that, that would be awesome.
So that'll list.
I'm still like, uh.
I'm almost done. I'm almost done. It's not my role of representing three different groups here. So. Yeah, there we go. So I'll be short of the net. And also kind of exciting news is that we also will be selling, uh, May Day T-shirts this year too. So we have our cool little western theme guy that Ron Ball had designed for the Wild Wild West. And they have that on a T-shirt and it's really cool and it's a limited supply and it'll be on sale the day of. So mix of colors and all that fun stuff. And senses. Uh, and then for perks, just a reminder that Tuesday. April twenty-sixth and Wednesday, April twenty-seventh from one to four. Residents only can get pickup for the, uh, the shipping event. You have to call. Our number to get signed up for, for pickup. The number is three six zero two one eight four two five seven. Um, if you put your stuff out for it, you're not on the list, they're not gonna pick it up because it's not always meant for people to pick up, so.
Possible clearly messages on that one. There are people who call us here.
It should be, it should be. It's no city number. So if they're not able to get ahold of her, I'm glad that they are calling here, but it should be good. I don't know if she has a voice on set up on that number. I'll double check.
And Kristen contacted her today about.
Okay. So yeah, that's, um, right now she's aiming for Wednesday. She's trying to fill up Wednesday and, um, we may be doing. A cleanup with John on Tuesday as well, but I'm not, that's all too to be.
Which day is the pickups?
Resident only pickup is Tuesday, the twenty-sixth and Wednesday, the twenty-seventh of April.
Like, like next, like.
Like next.
Like a week.
Yeah, a week or two. And then, um, on Saturday, April thirtieth from ten to three, it's open to the entire county. So you can come, drop off your stuff if, um. You wanna volunteer, uh, let us know too. The May Day Lions Club will be supplying lunch. So if we have a head count ahead of time, then they can figure out before we've done so hair pizza. Sometimes they do sack lunches. It's just whatever they have available depending on how many volunteers. And then we also had last, lastly, we have a sensitive document, shredding document event happening. Saturday, May twenty-first from ten to one, and that will be at the Little Crane Daily Storage Perky.
April twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, if you guys need me to drive my truck around, drive the dog truck.
Circus.
Okay. Okay, yeah. I'll definitely make sure my. Awesome. Thank you. Yes.
When again was the circus?
Wednesday, May twenty-fifth.
Yeah, the end of May.
Middle May, just one day, one day only, and I do not remember the times. I'm pretty sure it's in the evening. Because they said that they will show up in the morning and start setting up the tent and they usually try to reach out to the other schools to invite the kids to come see the, the circus tent get. Set up and everything.
Yeah.
So we'll see what happens, but, cause it's also gonna be happening. In a short time, twenty-four hour timeframe, I think, at least over at Castle Rock and then they're gonna be doing it in Rochester, maybe Raymond as well. And that's another cool thing. If you can't go on the twenty-fifth. But you still purchase, purchase the tickets from Lions, you can go to any of their events that are on their flyer and they will redeem your ticket for you. So it's good at any location and any other date. Which I don't have.
Should I have the maximum as for you?
I do not off the top of my head.
Well, you got me down for eight. I was gonna say, are they gonna stop set like Wednesday?
I think so. Um, they, they have all of, they talked about that they do have a limited number and stuff and it's been a few years, so they haven't really. Reached that, but. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any other public comment? Oh, good official comment. Karen Dunn's meeting is adjourned at six forty-eight PM.